Sarah, do we have minutes?
Yeah.
We do, and they were already distributed.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take that from Supervisor McGowan's second by Supervisor Bruno. Any discussion on that?
I'd love to hear it myself.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we had a really good discussion at our last meeting about the applicability and where we were going sort of with the list of water bodies and that sort of thing. You'll see in the packet that it's still the original version, which has not changed. You know, one of the things that I am hearing more is about the provision allowing towns to opt in or out, opt out of the law. And there is a concern that there's going to be confusion and less consistency if we allow this opt-out provision. So that's something that I think we need to seriously consider taking out. If we're gonna do this, we should do it and make it apply through the county. However, whatever we do, it's still at the water bodies listed at the back and properties that are located within 250 feet of the high watermark of those water bodies. Brett?
I guess my question is, is what is the benefit of opting out? What are the pros and cons of opting out? I mean, like Queensberry has their own, but it's just a law for the county. So would Queensberry opt out because they already have their...
Right, I think for Bolton and Queensberry, they wouldn't, this wouldn't apply because they already have their own local law. So it's other communities.
So if you read word that, is the only ones that are able, if you already have an established law?
Right.
Can you rewrite that?
We can do that if that's the will of the committee. So that in the future, if a town does pass their own thing, then they would be opted out of the county, but until then, they're in.
Well, I don't want to be in right now, so I guess we have to. I mean, seriously, we have our own system. We've got a good, strong zoning administrator. We have a lot of septic's and we have a lot of Board of Health meetings and...
But you have the law that it has to be inspected.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, everything, all our septic's, yeah.
On every, on every sale?
On every sale. I would have to make sure it was specific, but we do it, but I'm not sure it's written in specific.
I know that Assemblyman Simpson told me that he had worked on a proposal, but I don't know if it ever passed.
And he, I believe, I have to check to make sure it's...
Double check.
Double check it, but I, because I'm not for this with the way we do it. We have our own engineer, we have our own, you know, Board of Health, and I prefer not to...
So double check that and see if you've got it, then you would be, then your town wouldn't be, this one applies.
But I'm a little confused because doesn't this law, all it really, the law basically says is that they need to be inspected as per sale?
Per sale, right.
Right, and the towns?
Or any conveyance, I'll say, any conveyance.
Any conveyance. And that the towns or the county, if they already have their, everybody's set up to do their inspections and everything else, they can opt out of that part, but the law is basically, the bottom line is that every property needs to be inspected upon conveyance.
And that that inspection report would come to the county. It wouldn't necessarily go to the town. The towns would only have to get involved if there were a problem and they, some landlord needed to go through the regular approval process.
But if the town already has that, it's, why shouldn't they get, they should get a copy of that and we should get a copy of it.
Well, they can, we can add that.
I mean, I'm just trying to make this simple and make it the law that this is it, period, in this county, this is what goes down. The town has their setups, then this will blend in with the established, the established codes and engineers and everybody that they have. Is that, Sylvia, does that help?
Well, we have to have it anyway, so if we had to send it to the county, I mean, everything else goes through practically.
I mean, that's basically all it is, say that, okay, we have done this, you know, they have done this, we've got the inspection, everything's cool, all right, the sale can go through, then we can, we can make sure we accept all the monies or the mortgage taxes or whatever.
Right, and we would, yes, that would be kind of...
Just to check some balances.
Yes, exactly.
You know?
See, we have a sewer.
Well, you have, well, along your body water, you have a sewer, so...
Yeah, like 500 people, homes are hooked up to that.
Yeah, but, but beyond that, your sewer system, except for your sewer district, there are homes up there with still septic's around the lake.
Absolutely, but my question is, do we only want those inspected that are along the lake, or should every property that goes up for sale?
Well, right now, it's within 250 feet.
I understand that, but I'm saying if you're gonna say they need to be inspected, maybe everybody should be inspected up on sale. Doesn't matter, I have people live four miles up on the top of graphite. Does that mean if they sell their property, there isn't any need for their septic to be inspected because it's all downhill, no one, whatever's up there, we have a hay group that runs down into Lake George.
I can't say it on the speaker.
No, don't, please don't.
I know exactly what you're gonna say.
So I think that's something we can work in the future, is at all sales, but right now, I think we want to protect our water bodies. And like I said, beyond your sewer district, if there's homes, that has to happen within the 250 feet. Personally, I'd like it to be any water body, any inlet stream or anything, but trying to keep this quickly, just to keep it flowing, to keep this moving, keep it flowing.
Yep, yep.
You know, that we just do that, and like I said, and working with the towns.
Yeah. I think that the, most of the consensus is to focus on the immediate water bodies, areas next to the water bodies.
But you know, Sylvia also mentioned, we do a lot of acting as the Board of Health. We have so many sewer variances that come to our attention. I think Sylvia does the same thing. We as a board don't feel that we are qualified to make those decisions. So we go and we go with our engineers, we have them come to the properties, inspect the properties, and then they send the board a written evaluation of whether we should grant that variance to those people, or whether granting that variance is going to create more of a problem. So I kind of feel like we're doing our homework on some of this stuff. It's not like everybody that comes in and wants a variance because they want to do this, we say, yes, we don't. We decided as a board, we weren't intelligent enough, didn't have enough understanding of how sewers work, but that's why we went outside and decided to pay our engineers to come in and do that job for us. So just so, you know?
This is what Dennis was saying, and you guys already had that in place and you're going, this is just in conjunction with, all right? That is, that's great because you're absolutely right, and not every property's gonna meet, you know, every single need, so you're gonna need imbariances. But to me, to have a system that's 20% and move it up to an 80% or a system that's failing and move it up to an 80% instead of a 20% is better than not doing anything at all.
And sometimes it can't be moved up, so it's like, forget it, you gotta do something different.
And now, and the enhanced systems are getting better by the year, you know, that I'm seeing, or like, we just approved one on our planning board, that actually it goes from tank to tank, and every time it goes in between tanks, even leaving the house to a UV treatment, it's a, but it's in the floodplain, even though Glen Lake is never, not that high, but it's considered a floodplain, but his is in that, just in case. But by the time it just charges through this whole pumping system and that, it's really amazing, you know? They say you could drink it. I don't know if I would, but, but I mean, this is so, it's really, the opt thing, if it's to make it wording, you know, all this is, is to work together with the towns, you know?
Right.
It's just, it'd just be a law.
Yeah. You're, all of that stuff about the variances and you having to go to your, in the Board of Health, that's all still gonna happen, and I know you guys are doing a great job at it, especially when you're, you know, using your engineers to help you get that professional guidance.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, I'll look at that, I'll try to massage that language a little better. The other area, and I know we've been here for a really long time, so I just want to try to touch on one other area today, is the exemptions. So there are a few exemptions in the law already, which would say these properties don't need to comply with the law. That's on, oh, we don't have page numbers.
What page is that?
Oh, hold on, it does, it's not numbered. It's section H, so it's page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, page 5.
Oh, there it is.
What section?
Uh, section H. You'll see on that, on page 5, and then it spills over on to page 6. So the first one is when the property is not to be inhabited and they're going to demolish the structure.
All right.
So there's one, and then another one is not a total exemption, but a deferral due to winter weather conditions. They would have to submit an affidavit saying that they will complete the inspection within six months after the date of the conveyance. So hopefully that takes care of any issues where somebody's trying to sell their property in the middle of winter. Another one is when the trans, the person transferring the property is the County of Warren, a trustee, or some other like court-appointed situation, where they're not gonna have any ability to undertake this review. So the, it would, it says that the compliance would be required six months after the sale. And then another situation is where somebody has already received their certificate of a satisfactory system and they can, those are good for three years. That's number four.
That sounds fair.
Okay, number five, and I think we talked about the three years before being pretty good. All right, where there is an existing system, blah, 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 oh, getting connected to sewer. So there you go, Edna, maybe some people will get out of it if they connect to a sewer. Oh, okay, and then if they are granted an exception or an extension by the code enforcement officer. Anybody have any problems with those, 1 through 6?
No, they seem to cover some of the variables that you might have.
Okay, while we're here, if you look below, this is, this is the stuff that's in both Queensberry and Bolton's law about what actually qualifies as a failure. And it's based on the Department of Health and New York State DEC standards. I don't think we need to do anything with that, but if anyone has any concerns...
Let's walk through those, like, the others.
Okay, okay.
Because this is the main one, what constitutes a failure.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, lack of a pre-treatment vessel, so meaning they have no septic tank, like, it pretty much just goes right out into the field.
Oh, cesspool, what do they call it?
Um, okay, and here it says, where there is a discharge of effluent directly or indirectly into the groundwater, into the ground's surface. So that seems bad. Where there is a direct pipe surface discharge of gray water.
And then it says, into a drywell.
Over an embankment, uh, into a roadside ditch or stream.
Should we take out the parentheses there? Should it be like where there is a, or is that sufficient? Any discharge of gray water? A direct pipe surface, I think that means where you have a pipe that discharges gray water straight out. I think that seems bad.
Well, if it goes into a drywell, if it goes into the drywell, I mean, that...
Is that okay? Or no? We, with drywells, not okay.
Well, yeah, usually, you want the tanks and that to separate the solids and that, all right? Usually in the, in the drywells, you're just dumping the gray water, which is basically shower water, your kitchen, if you have a strainer and that, you know, just, so the gray water just goes down, but...
Right, maybe from, I know some people have these camps where they have just a washing machine that goes, is their gray water.
And toward drywell, yeah, and toward the gray water. I mean, but that, that needs to be...
Do we need to change that language?
I'd say let's review it to Article 75, the...
Okay. All right, so I'll circle that one.
Because I do not think gray water is accepted out of onsite water treatment.
No, no, it's still, it's got all the, it still has the nitrogens and that, that you're gonna get from your soaps and stuff like that that are harmful, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, more than I would say the toilet water.
Okay, but I circled that one to check, all right. When a dye test results in the presence of dye on the ground's surface.
Oh, yeah.
That is an indication that the system is not working.
Correct.
Okay. Where there is a backup of sewage into the dwelling building, septic tank or facility as a result of a system overload or malfunction or a clogged soil treatment area.
That doesn't make sense.
He's joking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I hope so.
Where, okay, I'm moving on, that, where this existing septic tank requires pumping more than four times per year and/or sewage, septic of fluid is, sorry, effluent is observed upon inspection flowing back into the septic tank from the secondary treatment area during pump out.
That means your leach field is clogged.
Something wrong, okay. All right, a metal septic tank, that's a no-go. It's not allowed.
Right.
Okay. And then here we go, cesspool, that's also not gonna be allowed. And, okay, everyone...
People still have those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we, I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't allow them.
I was gonna say, wow.
Yeah, we don't.
Present, okay.
So number eight, number three, where it says into a drywell, and to me, a drywell and a cesspool are kind of the same, perhaps.
Now, a cesspool is where the sewage goes, in the gray water, sewage and gray water are two different things, you know?
But a drywell, I'm talking drywell and a cesspool define the difference.
Basically, in that definition, a drywell and a cesspool are pretty much the same thing, unless what they're, Dan would know.
The drywell is, it's a structure perforated, it allows...
More than go out.
Whatever to cover into the ground. A cesspool is a collection of, and generally, septic, that sort of thing, where you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that in a drywell. A cesspool contains a cesspool, so the two are different.
A drywell allows it to seep away, whereas cesspool keeps it in.
Right.
Yeah, but eventually, in that cesspool, there's a level where your solid sink and your water flows out of upper holes in the cess, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
What you're trying to do is get that separated.
But we don't, but section 75 doesn't allow cesspools to handle septic.
Right, so... Yeah, no, and they're, and they're out there.
Okay, so we need, that's...
Okay, so, and there's definitions to go then with what a cesspool is versus...
Correct. A cesspool is basically, is a containment and leach altogether. That's the difference between that and a septic system where you have a holding tank, a D-box, and then a drywell system or a leach field. But a cesspool is both. Follow what I'm saying? Usually a cesspool, in my opinion, is a 55-gallon drum with holes drilled around it and things go in there and things seep out.
That sounds like a drywell.
No.
I thought a cesspool was just like a big open hole and the stuff flows into that hole. It doesn't have any holes or anything, it's just somebody dug a big hole in the ground.
There's all different types of cesspool, but this, to me, the definition of a cesspool, it all goes into one hole and it goes in and it disperses from there, you know?
Yeah, but it's too full, you're right.
Goes to a cesspool, then you may have a leach field connected to that, it may leak out from there. The cesspool itself generally doesn't, does not allow that.
But it's not a holding tank.
And nobody goes in and pumps out a cesspool.
Yeah, they...
Ah, they have to.
Oh, they do.
You have to clean them out.
Oh, you've gotta clean them out a little bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
Where mucker boots came in. That's when they invented mucker boots.
All right.
Frank knows that from...
Yeah, you know, it can be the same thing.
The idea here... You could have a cesspool going to a drywell.
Wait, Dan, which one are you looking at specifically?
The one we're talking about, where there's a direct pipe surface discharge of gray water. That's the key, surface discharge. You got a pipe that comes out and just runs on the ground and there's...
That's not okay.
That's not okay.
Right, okay.
And it may run into a drywell, like go over an embankment, into a roadside ditch, stream through, et cetera. That's why it says et cetera, because bottom line, again, it's a pipe discharging to the surface.
That's not, right, yeah, okay. So I feel like number three is okay then, Craig.
Okay.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, same with eight, same with eight, is the...
Eight's fine, too.
Eight cesspools.
And let's, Craig, let's argue it out.
Untreated sewage from, from, being utilized as their primary source of wastewater disposal. We're not gonna allow that anymore.
Flush toilet, it would go directly into this.
Cesspool, and that's it, and there's no other treatment or anything, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We don't want that.
Right.
Okay, presence of a holding tank that discharges effluent to surrounding subsurface areas.
We don't use holding tanks anymore.
Hopefully, they're not allowed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have any of those left either.
You...
That sounds like the 55-gallon drum thing, is that what that is?
Holding tanks, you can get them, most places you don't require a variance, and there are controls associated with it, if they allow you to have them. You got high-level alarms.
Okay.
Has to be monitored, has to be visual, and you have to have a pump to...
Okay.
They will send the...
But we're not allowing the turn-off water to the house.
That's correct.
Have that high bar.
You have to have a valve on your main water supply that is connected to the high-level alarm and the holding tank, that, once that high-level alarm is activated, it shuts off the water out. See that holding tank?
Oh, jeez, I gotta go, I gotta go.
Stop it. I think that, I think we leave number nine the way it is then, but if someone has these additional checks or, you know, alarms and all of that, then that might, that wouldn't qualify as exactly this, holding tank with no other controls.
We've had to approve that variance as holding tank, because there's no other choice.
Okay. But we should make them come get the variance from you guys, town.
I thought, I thought holding tank, we don't even allow holding tanks anymore, so, but you're allowing holding tank?
They're called pump-out holding tanks.
A holding tank's a holding...
Right.
Wait, let Craig, let Craig say what they're doing.
Yeah, when you have a pre-existing building there and they're replacing, it needs to be better than, and the only alternative is to have a holding tank, because there is no way for any type of re-charge to absorb down the ground. They do not have a stage or a site that would allow that, so the only other option is you put in a holding tank and you get it pumped out. Most of the times, these are river or lakeside, pre-existing non-conforming blocks that are so small, they don't know...
So you do allow, Sylvia, you do allow holding tanks, but they're just a holding...
Is that like the Aweco system, are those holding tanks?
What?
We also have...
You know what I'm talking about, and then there's that incinerator, that's another new...
Oh, that's a new, that, yeah.
I mean, those are the things we're going to, well, we haven't, the incinerator, we don't know yet, but...
The incinerator is to help...
The incinerator only takes care of part of the waste.
Well, we got one right now that we're probably not gonna, well...
Because it doesn't do that, it incinerates solid waste. It doesn't take care of the liquid stuff.
Well, where's the gray water go from the incinerator? It supposedly, well, I don't know, we're working on that one, but, but...
But this idea that a simple holding tank is not gonna be allowed?
No, no, no.
It's fine, right?
We don't allow it.
Yeah, okay. Where a septic tank, seepage pit, enhanced treatment unit, or soil treatment area upon inspection is found to be discharging to any outlet.
Me, what's an outlet?
Any, any outlet.
Describe outlet.
Out the lid.
I'm assuming that's an outlet of the system? That shouldn't be discharging things?
It could be at the end of your, could be at the end of your leach field that, you know, it's open, that your ground's not absorbing any more water and it's, it's leaving that, or it could be coming out the lid, or it could be coming out around where the pipes go in because of all the packing around the pipe, because the water's not able to be exhort.
Okay. Number 11?
Okay, 11 is every substantial failure or substantial non-conformity with the requirements of DOH Appendix 75A or local municipal regulations.
Okay, so I was talking to the fellow at DOH about certain variants there that we were looking at, and he says the DOH does not waive for new construction. Now, let me back this up. It is assumed that all systems are to be conventional. If they're not conventional, they need to be granted a variance. So a non-conformity is anything that is a non-conventional, where you have septic tank, distribution box, leach field.
How old was this gentleman?
He was on the phone, so he's over two years old.
Does he sound old?
So, every substantial failure, substantial non-conformity, I guess it's a substantial non-conformity.
Well, the other thing is, keep in mind, this is gonna be, a third-party inspector has to give us the report saying it's a substantial non-conformity.
Appendix 75A are the standard guidelines for design of a single-family septic system. So there are, you use that as your, as your design guide, so what they're saying is if you're, if you're not in conformance with that, which is part of the New York State Department of Health, then you're doing something that's not in accordance with the standard. This, there are... Verbiage in there, is actual design, et cetera, and it guides you how to calculate the size of your leach field, the size of your tank, et cetera, et cetera.
Based on, sorry, the house, bedrooms, all that.
Upper bedrooms, they're charted in there, the size of the internal policies.
I mean, and the purposes of this law is to find where there are substantial non-conformity issues or failures, like we just went through numbers 1 through 10. If there's a failure, go back in the law and it says the plant, you're supposed to then, what the landowner has to put forward a plan to correct the failure.
Right, so on this one...
It's on them to do...
Sorry for nitpicking this, because I also had a retired DOH fellow who's...
Who's older.
Five, older, come in and go, oh, what, combined failure, what is it?
We're gonna, we're gonna...
So here we are in section I, failure of onsite wastewater treatment, number 11, every substantial failure. So you're talking about a failure is a failure.
Right.
Yeah.
So, bad is bad.
Well, if you talk to Queensberry and if you could talk to Bolton, and basically what they're finding in a lot of these systems are really just minor, you know, smaller issues, I don't want to say minor, but smaller issues, not, you know, they're not all a complete...
Failure, yeah.
Complete failure.
So, go ahead, Dan.
What's a substantial failure?
Like, each one of these, we've gotten down to 10 of them already, and each one of them constitutes a failure.
Yeah, that they're gonna have to correct.
Right.
So number 11 is every substantial failure.
I don't think we should have the word every failure. I don't think we should have the word subs- every failure, would it be substantial or just every failure?
Right, right, because it's uh uh again, where.
Well, a minor, these are existing systems, though, we're not telling people they have to bring it up to complete compliance with current code. It has to be something substantial that means the system isn't working the way it should be. This is my interpretation.
It seems like we've been defining substantial failures all through the first ten.
Yeah.
Well, that's kinda true.
That's true, so you think we should just get rid of eleven?
No, take out substantial failure.
Yeah.
Or subs- or or substantial, and then every non-conformity with the requirements of New York State Health Appendix seventy-five A or local municipal regulations. Because the requirements are the engineer requirements for a system to work, and so if you take out the substantial, because they could say, well, it's not a substantial, non-conforming system, you know? It it's.
And boy, they.
It works a little, you know? Yeah, so if you take out, so, so every failure? No, so every non-conformity with the requirements of the New York State Department of Health Appendix seventy-five A, a local. So if it's not conforming to what New York State has standardized as in seventy-five A, then. You gotta, no, you just gotta bring it up, it, you know, and it, what it could be is like, oh, you you added an extra bedroom, you need another leach line out there, alright, so you dig another trench, or you put a little dry well in, you know, off your D-box there to pick that up, I mean, it's.
No, that, that could be what the, it looks like eleven and twelve are attached all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, or, and anything else that is in in conformity to seventy-five A or speeding permit. So. Every substantial failure.
I'm just worried if we take out the words substantial in both of those, you're gonna catch a lot of things, which we may, but but maybe that's fine, I mean, if they're failures, they should be corrected.
Right, it there.
To whatever extent they can, they'll bring forward a plan.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, they have to come in with a plan anyway.
Right, yeah.
And then it goes through steps.
Yep.
So even if it's not substantial.
They have to go to you guys for Board of Health's variants, that kind of thing.
I could see where the non-conformity would be, as Brad just pointed out, you have a system that's designed for a one-one-bedroom camp, and now it's, uh, like have a three-bedroom house. And so it doesn't inform.
But they have to come in when they build on an addition or add, you know, another bedroom or another two bedrooms or whatever.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Before you can give that permit.
Yeah.
Okay, you gotta do this, gotta do this.
That's if they come in for the permit, some of this stuff happens in the deep in the woods, you don't know what's going on.
Well, let me tell you, you get your person, you get them out there, because that's how you find it, and that's how we find them. And, you know, they, once they find that, then they gotta check the, um, you know, system to see, is that gonna hold?
You need to verify that.
Yeah.
This thing says.
Alright, so do you guys wanna take out the words substantial in eleven and twelve?
But let's, let's just flag it for further, further review, leave it in there for now, it was put in for a reason.
Yep.
It's been thought through before.
Yep, yeah. Okay, that's all I had to cover, and I know people need to go.
Yeah.
Is everyone, we have another meeting, we're gonna do one more workshop and then try to bring something to the full board. We were directed to do so by whatever, the October meeting, I think.
By the September resolution, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead. I know we have a deadline coming up soon, so I'm just trying to get us going.
You have a deadline because the board asked for the presentation from this group to be by the end of September for the workshop, so.
And the workshop is set, right?
For the last day, I think, of September, the twenty-ninth, I think, the twenty-ninth at four o'clock, where hopefully this group presents.
Uh-huh.
Um, and we can put it on first if you would like, uh, OPCTAC is also presenting the community and the board, just the application overview, if the changes.
What time is that workshop?
Four, four. So, that's really where your group comes together and says, this is what we're proposing, no action can be taken, and then it would be taken up in the October round of meetings.
Okay, so I was hoping we could meet September in two weeks, September fifteenth. It's a Wednesday, and we didn't do an evening meeting yet. Do you have a board meeting that night?
No, I haven't on Thursday, though, I don't wanna.
Yeah, it's hard when you're trying to get ready, minus I know the week before that.
Edna, would it be helpful, Sylvia, if, because this really is so critical to water bodies, particularly like George, to try to have like a late afternoon or an early evening, or whenever is best up in like Hague and Huracan, that area, uh, over, you know, to try to participate with, um, invite the public, you know?
I did ask if we could do it at Town Hall in Lake George, and they were not available that that particular evening, their their room was.
Which day are you looking at?
September fifteenth. Can we do it up at Town Hall in like Brant Lake?
Well, or. We could, but I, I'm not sure if we have a planning board, one, yeah, we have a planning board meeting that night, but we could do it earlier.
Oh, okay, what time?
Three o'clock.
Five, four, three?
Yeah, we have people don't like late meetings.
Oh, yeah, I'm coming back from Niceak.
You can get back, because inner county is that morning, will be done by noon, it's two and a half hour, yeah, you could get up there by three.
Three, alright.
Let me just double check and get back, because I don't know, I think they have the planning board.
Okay.
No, that's pushing it right now, that's, I don't think that's.
That's good.
We don't think what's there.
That's pushing it, she has a schedule, I, that's too tight. But you're coming back from church.
What, it's okay.
We do it jointly with.
That day, can we do the fourteenth?
Was that a Thursday?
That's Tuesday, or is that?
No, we'll be away, we're at Niceak, the conference. Brad, I don't mind, I wanna get it done, so if.
No, I understand getting it done, but that particular day is just, you know, I I, to me, if I was going and, you know, and then I just think it's too much, but.
Well, pick the week after maybe then, right?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
You guys are really.
I could do twenty-second.
What you're looking at.
We could exchange some draft by email, too, twenty-second, up there?
No, I'll be back the twenty-first or something, yeah.
Oh, Sarah, are you catching this?
For you.
Okay, so September twenty-second?
I had talked to Sam too about um September fifteenth, but we'll need to, I think we're gonna push it to the twenty-second.
The twenty-second?
And is that gonna be what time? You want me to, you want?
You check, you check, evening, or like late afternoon.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and I'll send in my dinner menu, uh.
We can go over to uh the hub for dinner.
If you're hoping to do it with public participation, I just don't know what the, you know, right, that's the goal.
That's the whole point, is to try to get the public from up there, yeah.
So I don't know if early morning is better for the public before work starts later in the day.
Or Saturday.
I don't think people wanna do a septic meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, do they?
No, I don't think so, I think we're better off in the afternoon, because people are getting done, or some of the, you know, any teachers and you know, most people can be there by.
And we'll have to.
Truck Fridays involved, suddenly could do it on a Friday afternoon.
That would've been perfect.
Oh, you can have your meeting on.
Too late.
Too late, sorry.
Next year, we gotta hold a meeting.
Okay, so, and in any case, hold the late afternoon of September twenty-sixth, please.
Yeah, and I'll check and see if we're available.
Thank you, also, we'll have to try to livestream it.
We can, I think we can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, we got.
I know you have to have a person who knows how to do that, you know?
True.
Alright, very good.
Okay.
I'll chip in, I'll chip in. Okay. Alright, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm not gonna get the people out.
Sam and Supervisor McGowan, Brad. All those in favor?
Aye.